So I want to point out to everybody in the audience that there are cards on your seats. We have cards. Barb and Ruby are here to just attract their attention. They'll pick up any questions you've written on your cards, and they will deliver them to me after making sure they're legible and don't repeat a question that's already been asked. So please write clearly. Okay. So, welcome to Election 2014, election coverage. I'm Nancy Bickel. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. So people be coming in in the course of this recording and this event, doesn't matter. Please come in. Our first hour, we'll be talking with the four candidates for school board. There are three seats open on the school board, and four are competing for them. So this is your chance to find out what those four people have to say about themselves and about the schools. The League has prepared questions for the candidates, but as I explained a little earlier, we welcome you to bring questions, to send questions over to our question screeners over here, and they will bring up the questions after they've reviewed them for repetition, clarity, and so on. Now, I'd like to introduce the four candidates who are running for the three Emory School Board positions. From the left, please welcome John Affeldt, Miguel Dwin, Don Lee Maryam, and Christian Robin Pats. I'll just remind the audience and the candidates about the rules. Every candidate will answer every question. Every candidate will have one minute to make their response. We'll move along, starting with each candidate in turn, so everyone gets a chance to start. We encourage the candidates to tell the voters their own views, rather than criticizing each other. But if one candidate does make a direct statement about another, that candidate will have a chance to respond for an extra minute, and as moderator, I'll decide. So let's begin with a question for John Affeldt. I think this is one that all of you will be familiar with. It's about the Common Core curriculum. So, John, how far along is the district in implementing the Common Core standards? How's it going? And what are your suggestions for improving implementation of the Common Core?
Well, I think we need to be a little further along than we are. And I'm pleased to see that our new administration, Superintendent Rubio, we brought him in in part because he's an expert in curriculum and instruction, and immediately launched extra professional development days, negotiated that with the teachers, starting before school. We're going to be doing some extra professional development, three days in October, and two more days at another point during the year. And he brought with him a new math curriculum, Eureka Math, which is the only Common Core math curriculum that has sort of been endorsed throughout the country. And so I'm glad to see that we're doing Eureka Math. I'm working on that with my son every night. But this is a real challenge, and we've got a long way to go. I wish we were further along.
Thank you. Miguel?
Yes. At this point in time, as my colleague had said, we have started Common Core development with our teachers. At this particular time, I am pleased with the response that we have received from teachers saying that this is the best professional development that they've ever had at Emory USD. As Mr. Affeldt has said, there has been negotiation for three extra professional days in the schedule with two more to come. So at this time, based on teachers' response of the first professional development with Common Core, I am very excited that teachers are excited about it. They are willing to have two extra days, and I really believe with the extra four days coming, that teachers would be very abreast upon it. And I've even seen teachers explain what Common Core is to our parents at after-school night. So they're really excited.
Don?
Nancy, thank you very much. And I want to give a thanks to the League for organizing this and sending out the information for this forum. As far as the Common Core is concerned, and I know there's been some misuse of the word "Common Core" when it comes to implementing new curriculum and new standards, when it comes to the teaching of our students, but it has to do with where basically marshaling our forces in order to make sure that we're on track. And from previous two statements, it sounds like there's two opposing ideas or mindsets behind that. So as far as where we're at, I am kind of standing back and taking a look at it since, as far as knowing what's going on in the inner workings of the Common Core implementation, it's a bit difficult in that sense where I can't get a grasp of it. But as a member, I would be able to marshal my forces and interest into making sure it does get implemented in a timely and scheduled...
Thank you. And Christian?
Thank you for having us. And I think my two colleagues have sort of talked about the structures that are in place to start implementing Common Core. But I'd like to talk about curriculum in general. I think it's an ongoing process. The name changes from state standards to Common Core, to various curriculums we've had over the years. And it's critical that our teachers have quality-first instruction and really are provided with professional development early and often on what it is they're teaching. And I think we've done a good job this year, even though we're getting to it a little late in the year, of getting those teachers the professional development they need. As a school board member, I would be very committed to making sure that we have ongoing and timely professional development, not having to do things in the middle of the school year, but before the school year starts, because I think that's critical so teachers can hit day one, hit those standards right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Something, let's do a little bit of a follow-up. Something I didn't hear anybody mention is, what are the subjects that have already been, what are the Common Core subjects that have already been introduced, and what's coming next? Could you each talk a little bit about what you see? John, you want to just, let's just go down the row one more time.
The state has adopted English, Language Arts, and Maths, and is in the process of adopting Next Generation Science Standards. So that's where the country is. Some 44, 45 states have adopted those Common Core, and that's where we're at. Now, I think the important thing that goes along with that, that's just as revolutionary as the sort of higher-order thinking curriculum, are the new tests, which are going to be much more sophisticated than standardized fill-in-the-bubble tests. And I think the teachers are excited about that as well.
Miguel?
At this time, we have started English, and we will be starting math soon.
So math hasn't gone in yet?
Math hasn't gone in, but it will be starting.
Don, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just a minor thing to this. As far as getting the standards implemented, it seems as if we can approach it in a fashion where it's on everybody's mind that we have to get it implemented in a worthwhile timeframe. And I think because we're still figuring out how to address it and how to really implement it, it's still a question mark that has yet to be even addressed.
Thank you. Christian, did you want to add anything to this?
I think my colleague, Mr. Affeldt, hit on it. It's the assessments that are critical at this point. They're being rolled out as well. And we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to do the smarter balanced and the other assessments that are all now digital and not paper and pencil, and really making sure that infrastructure's in place, and the faculty and staff know how to work with the students on that. And so that's the training that I'm going to make sure we get that implemented, because it's not just the Common Core, but it's also get technology component. We can talk about it as being the end product at the assessments, but it's really technology in the classroom and having that infrastructure for the students to be using it on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Comfortable with it.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. So Miguel, let's start the second question with you. You've had two big things to implement this year. Locally controlled funding has been the other big challenge. Since now the school boards have to decide much more of how the funding is, you're not getting categorical funds, you're getting, I know you know this, but maybe not everybody in the audience does. So this year, you were supposed to be consulting parents about how money should be spent in each school, and making sure that children with special needs, English language learners, children from low-income homes, children for whom English is not their first language, and others, that they get the extra support and the extra funding they need. So how successful do you think the district has been in its first year under this system?
We were very successful regarding getting parent involvement, getting students' involvement, as well as teachers. When we looked at what English language learners, one of that particular category, we decided to fund more intervention for our students in that category. We also decided to add an additional science teacher to bolster up our science program. So for this first year of the LCAP, I think that the district did a fine job regarding going out in the community, getting input, and bringing that input back to the board for the board to make a decision on what's best for students. And for those, you know, two aspects of intervention, as well as science teachers, was one of the main attributes that we decided to implement in the LCAP program.
Thank you. Don?
Yes. From what I've acquired as far as public knowledge on the subject of the LCAP, I've noticed that there was numerous committees that met that had to do with garnering input on which direction the district shall take. And from that, it seems as if that there's a myriad of requests or suggestions in that, and all of them are very, very valid. And as far as its implementation, it seems as if it's still in a state of flux. And I think through a push on behalf of the board, as far as their responsibility, would be in fact to really make sure that we do incorporate the most valid points, so there was those committee suggestions.
Thanks. Christian?
So I think we did have a, for a rollout year, I think we were successful on that. I think we had some parental involvement. We had the stakeholders involved. And I really, when we were talking about the LCAP plan, I was happy to hear some student voices in there as well, and I would encourage more of that. I think when it came to the board's turn to implement it, we had some tough choices to make and weren't able to go with all the priorities, because the LCAP isn't an unlimited fund. And so I think that was a challenge. And I would like to have had more time to bring it back to the stakeholders and say, okay, we can't do everything on this list. We need to prioritize, and let's start paring down. So I think as we evolve and are getting better at this, I would like to see some year-to-year growth in that aspect.
Thank you. Chris, I think it's John.
So this is an issue near and dear to my heart. As a civil rights attorney and lead counsel in a case that challenges the state for its constitutional failure to adequately fund our schools, local control funding form does not fix the adequacy problem. However, it is a weighted formula that does send more money to low-income students and English learners and foster youth. And that is an issue that I've been advocating for 15 years. I was a key negotiator on behalf of low-income communities with Governor Brown. I sat in his office next to the governor and worked with his staff very closely, and am pleased with a lot of the additional flexibility the district's got, but in exchange for that, the heightened engagement that's required. And I did get in the bill the requirement that parental involvement be a state, one of the eight state priorities that must, we must all do now as districts. And I'm also pleased that the students recognized us at the State Board for Emory's engagement with students in the LCAP development.
So we have a question from the audience that is somewhat related to this. What do you see as the roles of parents in the decisions at the administrative level, and how are you going to bring them in, or have brought them in, into the, I think it says, school? So I think that will be Don?
Yes, thank you for that question. As far as bringing them into the school, I know that we're going to be faced with a large move within the next year, year and a half or two years down the road. And so I think with that in mind, you're going to see probably a more influx of people into the actual community when they want to participate. So as far as bringing them in and taking their information or taking their ideas and implementing them, I think on a level that it's a process. It's not a one-stop shop, nor is it a suggestion box. It needs interaction amongst all groups and all participants. So I think with that in mind, you really want to make sure that the availability of everybody that's involved is aware of everybody else's actions and interpretations and involvement.
Christian?
You know, I don't think we can have enough parental involvement. I would like to see more people attending board meetings. I'd like to see more, a more rich school site council. And then at back-to-school night, I was able to overhear a parent talking to Dr. Rubio about the process for looking for administrative staff and asking, were parents on the panels, weren't parents on the panels? And the first go-around, we had a very rich parental involvement, but as things evolved, it has been a struggle as we're moving very quickly. So I'd like to see us being more proactive and getting parents there and making sure we're making decisions early enough in advance to include the community and not be doing what we have done, which is having to make decisions quickly where we don't have time to gather people, have them talk about it and things. So I think we need to be better at getting parental, parents involved. I'd like to start having, you know, not all of Emory's students live in Emeryville, and I'd like to start bringing parents from outside the community in as well, make sure their voice is heard. I think that's a critical feature for our district.
Thank you. John?
Well, as I said, I think that we need, I value parental involvement, and I also would like to see more of it. I did build parental involvement into the local control funding formula. I also, myself, got involved with the district initially, before I was on the board, as a member of the school site council. Started reinvigorated that at NE8's. That is a key area for parents to get involved and design the program of the local, each school site. And I worked to make sure that part of the local control funding formula must converse with the school site council plan, so that those two entities sort of work together. That said, I think we need to invest more resources in improving our parental engagement and outreach in the district.
Thank you. Miguel?
Parental involvement is essential. It's one of the key elements for a successful school, as well as a school district. I will, I would encourage any and all parents to come to school board meetings. I think we have not stressed that enough. I think as board members, we should hold our administrators accountable for more parent engagement at the PTO level, at the school site council level. So I think it's very important and incumbent on us as school board members to push the envelope a little bit more when it comes to parent involvement, and making sure that we hear from every parent in the district. And it doesn't make a difference if parents are coming to the school board, giving dissentant comments, you know, they have a right as well. But I think we need to hear from all parents to make a successful school district.
Thank you. I believe it's Christian who gets the first, the next question. So we've talked about administrators, a little bit about teachers. Let's talk about the youngest kids in the district. I noticed that on its website, NE8's Elementary, announced a special emphasis on the wellness program to help students' physical, mental, and social health. Is this program working to improve student health and school performance? And where do you think it should go? What do you think should happen with it?
So I had the opportunity to meet the wellness team at back-to-school night on both back-to-schools for NE8's and for the ESS. And I was really impressed with the outreach that they were doing there and the programs that the district offers. And I think as we move towards more of a community school, that is our goal, is to be more holistic in how we serve our students. If you ask me how we are now, and if you ask me how that impact is there, we're not where we want to be, but I think we're working in that direction. And I, you know, there was a big thing about the food on campus and revamping the cafeteria, and I think we responded quickly to that. I think there's other areas that the district still has some room for growth in and is not quite at the wellness goals. There's a big push right now for more physical education at the elementary schools and some big concerns over that. And there's a high school student who desperately wants a soccer field that we can't offer him at the moment. And those are some things that I really want to make sure this year we address.
Thank you. John?
We had an excellent presentation by the wellness team last spring. Going to say a May or so board meeting, but if you flip back through April, May, you'll find it. And John Quinn, who was then our interim superintendent and is quite experienced individual, been around districts for decades, remarked to me afterwards that our wellness program here is probably the most well-developed of a district in Northern California. And we still have a school nurse. That is something that many schools have cut in recent years. We have mental health services and counseling services that many schools don't. Our sort of special ed folks often do double duty and work with our students. So I think we could do more, and I'd like to restore the Family Resource Center. But, you know, we're doing much better than most.
Thank you. Miguel?
Wellness has been the gem of our district. Before wellness, especially at NE8's, API scores were in the high 600s. When we implemented the wellness program for screening for dental, vision, asthma, we seen that the API scores jumped up to 850 over two years. I believe that with our wellness and doing the screenings that they do do, a child cannot perform well in class if they can't see. A child cannot perform well if their, if their dental is not, you know, if their hygiene is not there. So I think encompassing that program for our students have made a world of difference at NE8's, as far as how our students perform in the classroom.
Thank you. Don?
Yes. As far as the approach or the wellness center or wellness program, it's a holistic approach, where we need to make sure that we enforce and basically make it flourish as far as the emotional state of our students, the physical education aspect of the students, along with the social aspect of the students as well. And it just goes beyond academics. And I think with those three approach, or those part of that, that they will help the academics and, because that's usually a measure, how it's measured throughout the state as far as your academic excellence or your academics prowess. So I think with that in mind, if the emphasis on those three would in fact help the overall picture.
Thank you. I think we're on to the next question. We have a question from the audience. I think, John, I think it's up to you, to start. Ninety-three percent of Emory teachers signed a teacher's resolution two years ago. The resolution expressed dissatisfaction with the superintendent of schools. The board ignored the teachers. If such a resolution were to be brought again, how would you deal with the teachers?
So that resolution happened shortly before I joined the board, and I was not part of the board's response to it. That said, I was part of the ultimate response, which was basically very frequent superintendent evaluation, closed-meeting sessions, which you can review the agenda items to see that. And ultimately, a non-renewal of the superintendent's contract and finding a superintendent who we felt would be very positive in his interactions with the teachers' union, and that has happened to date. I individually have always maintained open communications with the union and the teachers. I see them in the hallway, and I met with them after hours. And I think if you talk to the union leadership, they'll indicate they're supportive of the way that I've communicated with them.
Thank you. Miguel?
I wouldn't say that it was a resolution. It may have been some, it was, it was a proposal that came to the school district regarding, you know, what the teachers thought of the incoming superintendent and the superintendent first year. My position was to, you know, give everyone a fair chance. Give the superintendent a fair chance, give the staff a fair chance for everyone to work together. As a board, we've done that. It did not work out the way we thought it was going to be. And at this time, we separated ties with the superintendent.
Don?
Yes. I think it has to do with lessons learned. When it comes to, the fact is that we've encountered this issue with the superintendent being not as, carrying a higher standard than we normally would have. So I think with that in mind, when any new or future superintendent that would be in place, that the board and even outside the board would be, make them aware of, this is a very critical and very important item when it comes to the relationship between the administration, the students, the teachers, and the general public. And that's probably the more critical thing as far as it's just, it's filtering and basically identifying and making sure that the prospective candidate is aware of this issue that we've had as far as the history.
Thank you. Christian?
So I wasn't on the board when this happened, but I think it speaks to a bigger problem in the district. I think a challenge we've had in Emory is finding and retaining quality leadership. We've gone through, in the 10 years I've lived in Emeryville, 10-plus years I've lived in Emeryville, the superintendent position has not been a success. And I think that's trickled down into even hiring at the two school sites. And this is an area that really troubles me. And one of the main reasons that I want to be on the school board is I think we need to vet candidates. And I think, as Don said, we need to make sure we've learned our lessons here. And I think we keep repeating this pattern of bringing people on who we think are going to be absolute stars, and then they go supernova on us. And we have, I don't want it to get to 92% of the teachers. I don't want it to get to be where, we don't have 10% of the teachers on board. We need to vet our candidates. We need to get people who can get us on base. We don't need to hit a home run. We need to get solid people who can do a solid job and meet the needs of our kids. Because if you look where we are, we're not where we want to be, and that comes from quality leadership.
Thank you. I think everybody's answered. I think the next question is to you, Miguel?
Yes.
There is a stubborn performance gap between children from more and less advantaged homes, of course, not just in this district. But do you feel the district is closing that gap? Or what more do you think needs to be done? Or what specifically are the steps you think need to be taken?
I think since I have joined the board nine years ago, we have definitely closed the gap. I think there's still a lot to be done. I think some of the remedies that we've done for that since I've been there is that the the board has adopted an ADG policy for its curriculum, ensuring that all courses are transferable to the UC and the CSUs. I think, uh, we've also have, um, collaborated with Berkeley City College to allow our students to have college credit courses, so they can be, have the same opportunities as students from the more comprehensive, big high schools that have, um, advanced placement, uh, programs. So, um, to that extent, you know, we've come a long way. Uh, we have a ways to go, but we have come a long way when, in regards of student, um, achievement gaps.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, um, as far as the, the increase in scores, I know that Anna Yates has probably been the more, the more, I would say, uh, identifying with the increase in test scores. And I think the high school or the secondary school is essentially where the, um, the, uh, lying in wait is, is issuing, is where we have a situation where the test scores are not improving. And mind you, that test scores are not the clear, uh, uh, guide or, or, um, uh, basically, it's essentially the, uh, uh, it's not the means of testing is where, basically, it would be the, um, reflective of where we're really at. With that in mind, the fact that Anna Yates is, is increased, we know that it's going to be carried into the, the new high school. And with the new high school or the new, uh, ECCL, that will help, um, basically garner a new environment when it comes to the overall approach to, um, basically reflecting in our, in our, in our testing.
Thank you. Christian?
So, I, you know, when we look at this issue, we look at the achievement gap across ethnicity, race, we look across disability, we look at across language. And while we haven't done any better than the state of California, we haven't done worse than the state of California, I think this is a dialogue that needs to happen on a daily basis. It is something we need to focus in on as a district and really look at where we can move students. Um, you know, we can talk about Anna Yates doing some of that, but then we have this huge attrition of students once they move from Anna Yates to middle or to high school, and we lose kids. Um, so I think the gap is there. I think it's as wide as it is across the state, and we really need to focus in on reducing it. I think this is a challenge, not just for Emeryville, it's a challenge for the Bay Area, it's a challenge for the US. I do want to end on a positive note. If you go to Emeryville schools and you're a child of color, you are more likely to graduate than if you go to a different school in California. And that's something as a district we should be very proud of, because to me, we can talk about test scores, we can talk about other things, but I want kids graduating with a diploma, and that's something we do in Emeryville well.
Thank you. John?
Well, I, I, we do do better actually than the average district in the state with our demographics, particularly at Anna Yates. Uh, and we do, as, um, uh, Christian indicates, we do have a better than average graduation rate. Most of our students graduate A to G compliant, uh, meaning ready to go to a, a two- or four-year college. Uh, that said, uh, I, I'm not satisfied. I don't think we should be satisfied with the continuing gap, the continuing level of, of achievement. And one of the reasons that, uh, I've been excited to join the board is the fact that I, I think we can do better in this district. We are a small district. We're building an exciting, progressive, full-service community school that's going to have wraparound wellness services and social services. We, we, we can do much better, and we should.
Thank you. So I think, Don, you have the next question. Um, it's a subject dear to the hearts of the League of Women Voters. As it is now, the state requirement for teaching civics is only a one-term elective in the twelfth grade. Is the district, uh, doing more than this? And what should the district be doing? When should children learn about their government and about their community and participate in it?
That's a great question, Nancy. I really, really like that, that question. As far as civics is concerned, I think it, it should be carried throughout the, the twelve or plus years that you are in, 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 in school within the EUSD, and even beyond EUSD as far as, you know, the statewide. Um, it doesn't have to be, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be a program where it's, it's a class. It could be generally applied throughout the, the curriculum. So it's not where it is of, of a specific, um, program. It would be along the lines of where you'd have it, um, in, in, uh, almost every subject that you would be teaching would have some aspect of, of a civics course or civic information.
Thank you. Uh, John?
No. Are you, are you going to Christian?
Oh, oh, sorry, Christian, I, I apologize.
That's okay. Um, so I, I think this is, uh, one of those challenges when you talk about what the state is requiring us to do, what we have the ability to do. But what I will say is if you make units of inquiry, which is part of the Common Core, which is coming out, we just did a great presentation to the board from the art teacher at the high school, and she brought her students through the history of Emeryville and let them then look at each aspect that they found interesting. And they, the kids looked at across-the-board issues and were involved in the community. Were presenting their out, um, their ideas, their art was showcased at Bay Street. This is the kind of thing that I think teaches civic engagement much more so than taking a one semester class and making it two semesters or moving it to the eighth grade. It's really bringing kids into the community, letting them have these inquiries, and then letting them have an impact. One of the things that our board does very well is we have a student representative, and she has a very strong, or last year's had a very strong voice. I'm looking forward to this year's coming on board. And that, to me, I think teaches civic engagement much more so than adding a second class.
Thank you. John, now you.
Now me. Uh, well, I, I, I agree with that. I mean, it's not just about, uh, an extra course in high school, it's about trying to embed it in the curriculum. Uh, and, um, I, I've seen the curriculum working with my son, and, you know, one of his favorite projects last year was, you know, researching a building in Emeryville and its history and we, uh, or the nearby area. We went to the Carnegie Library, right across the border, the Oakland Library, and, you know, he, he can tell you a lot about Andrew Carnegie and who he was. Um, the art example in Ms. Stillman's class, we're going to put online, you should see, it's a wonderful example of students, you know, digging deep, deep, learning, uh, about how to, um, their community, but, you know, how to express themselves. Uh, also, we've built into, as I said earlier, I think, I think some of our best lessons are getting students engaged in the, uh, Local Control Accountability Plan and designing the educational program of our district. And I think we, we've adopted a model policy here to do that.
Thank you. Miguel?
Yes, you, uh, this is very near and dear to my heart as well. Um, I am a very strong supporter in civic leadership for our students. At one time, we had put this as actually a graduation requirement for students to have civic leadership. Um, before the state had these large cuts, we had, um, a, in, a somewhat of a civic leaders, um, leadership program. We had students involved in debates, um, a, a debate club. We had students, um, involved in civic pride, which is in Oakland. Um, I lobbied hard to get students on our city schools committee. Uh, we do have students on our school board. And also, we have students who have committed their time to volunteer at our local nonprofit ECAP to feed those who are the most needs, to see what's really out there and what they must do to contribute back to their society.
Thank you very much. Uh, Christian? Uh, one, I see that one of the stated guiding principles of the district is, "We inspire and support innovation to end racist and classist practices." How are the schools doing in meeting that goal? And, uh, what more needs to be done?
So I think this goes back to your last question about civic engagement, and this is where, you know, I, it's empowering students and really taking the time out to provide them opportunities they wouldn't be provided elsewhere. And I'll go back to the presentation, this was an opportunity where you get to see what's out there in the community. And they brought in an anthropologist. And I can tell you, when we talk about practices of, of those natures, it's that lack of exposure and experience to a variety of jobs, a variety of things. I can't tell you that, you know, at seventh grade, how many kids know what an anthropologist does, what that field is like. So to me, it's that level of stuff. And with everything in this district, I, we're getting there. We're really working hard to bring about those goals. I love that we have that as a goal right up there in bold print, but it's, it's going to be with all the other goals. It's a challenge right now, and we're working towards that.
Thank you. John?
Well, I, I, I think the whole effort to build a full-service community school is an effort to deal with racist and classist practices that have led to, uh, structural poverty and, and unequal educational opportunity, and that the, the district is on the right path in trying to make sure that, uh, uh, our students have, uh, the additional wellness services, the, the support, the integration with, uh, the broader community, uh, the libraries, the nurses, uh, as well as first-class instructors, uh, to achieve. Uh, secondly, I think that the, it does go back to the student engagement piece and giving, um, you know, students' voice and empowerment in, in, uh, their educational experience. And, uh, I think we've been, um, we've been trying to do that and have done a, a decent job, and there's room for improvement always.
Thank you. Miguel?
You know, this is, this is a national problem. And I think that Emory was on the cutting edge when we came, uh, with this as a guiding principle. Um, one thing about Emory that I am so proud of as far as our school district, we have a very, very diverse school district. Um, this, actually, the city does not reflect the demographics of our school district. And the teachers that we have, um, at, at, in Emory, are, they are very conscious when it comes to racist and classist practices, and they instill in our students, you know, how to be, how to treat one another. And you can see that in the play and the communication that our children have when they're out there on, on the playground. Yes, we have a long way to go, but again, this is a national problem. And, you know, I'm proud of Em- Emeryville for taking the steps to end racist and classist practices.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, uh, as far as the district's approach to it, I, I really commend them as far as putting that on the forefront regarding, it's a statement by the board and by the overall entity of, of Emory, unified. And because of that, it's, it's, it's worth looking at and talking about, because I think that's the biggest issue we have today, that it's not talked about enough as far as how to deal and how to accept another individual. And because of that, we've got, as Miguel said, as far as this national problem, as far as racism, is that if there's an understanding amongst all people that have an opportunity, that there's a better understanding of how another person thinks. And when that occurs, you have a greater respect for that individual, and with the policies that are in place by the district, we can enforce that and, and basically make it flourish.
Thank you. I think everybody's had a chance with this one. Um, I believe it's John again. Uh, so this is, was touched on earlier, uh, truancy, I believe, somebody mentioned. But do you feel the district is dealing well with truancy? And, uh, do you think the rate is high? Is it declining? Uh, what steps has the district taken? And what do you think you want to take, uh, go on and take further?
I think we're, uh, doing a decent job, actually, and I, and, um, I, I couldn't tell you the exact rate, but it's in the nineties. And, uh, you know, everyone wants a hundred percent, because then you get, um, more average daily attendance funding from the state. Uh, but I think we're, we're in the, um, you know, in the, in the mid to nineties or so, give or take a few percent. I don't want to give you the exact number. Uh, I know that the district, because we're small, we, we do track students and we pay attention to it. So, uh, I, I don't think, um, you know, we can always improve our systems, and our, our superintendent is a good one at thinking how to do that. Uh, I know when, uh, you know, my son missed a day, and I, I, he was missed a couple days in a row, and we, maybe the third of those four days, we didn't have the excuse note. I got a truancy letter saying my son was truant. And I thought, well, you know, that's really a hypersensitive system. Uh, so, uh, I, yeah, I don't think it's, it, it wouldn't be my top, you know, priority, but it's something we certainly want to keep, um, an eye on.
Thank you. Miguel?
Yes, truancy is a hundred percent better than it was, I would say, nine years ago. Um, we have students in class because they're happy to be there. Um, we have teachers who look out after students, and if they're not there, they will call parents and call the home. So I think it, you know, at this current time, um, truancy is good. And I think, you know, we can always do better, but at this time, you know, we're in, like, like Memorial Affairs says, somewhere in the ninety percentile. And, um, I think we're doing well at this time.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, I think with the, um, as John had mentioned regarding the, um, percentage of, of, and the amount of money that the, the state is, uh, pushed to the district regarding attendance figures, I think that's, uh, that's critical, because it does, uh, help our, our bottom line, if you really want to put it in that sense. But I think with the, um, the triad, I want to call it, is the administration, the parents, and the teachers, all, basically the adults looking out for the children, or the students, that with an added influence or added impact of those three people, uh, three, three groups would be able to garner more and more, um, awareness and making sure that the students do attend.
Thank you. Uh, Christian?
I think this is the perfect follow-up question to the one about racism and classism, because it's, the word we chose here was truancy, and that is not our en- issue. We don't have truancy problems, we have attendance problems. We need to get kids into class. We need to get kids getting, benefiting from their education. Once we say a kid is truant, we're now accusing them of a crime. And it offends me that that's the word and the frame we put this in. We need to get the kids in there. School causes positive attendance. We need to get kids in class. If we refer to them and send them a letter that says, "You are truant," now we've disengaged that family. Now we've said, "Look, you're not a student who's absent or sick." You know, "Hey, where are you?" We're not asking that. We're saying, "You're truant." And that's the wrong path to go down. And I think if we're going to really end racist and classist practices, this is an excellent opportunity as a place to start.
Thank you. Um, so this is somewhat, a question somewhat related to this issue, and I think it, we'll start with Miguel. Life skills. How well are our children in this school system, uh, being prepared for life in society? Managing personal finances, work skills, and so on? Miguel?
You know, I, I would say that's probably one of our weakest areas. Um, preparing children for their financial, um, being, preparing, you know, stu- students for life skills is something that, you know, we really have to look at. We have not done, um, well since I've been there. But I do encourage, um, that our, our staff and our superintendent, that, you know, we should do more regarding life skills, so students can be prepared when they come out of high school. Because all students may not go to college, but we do want them ready, job readiness. That's another area that we need to work on. Um, before the, um, reduction of state funds, we had it, um, we, we were starting to build an internship program. But when funds kind of depleted, that caused us not to, um, continue that program. But life skills, readiness for jobs, is something that we really need to work at.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, as far as life skills are concerned, I know that it's, you seem like it would like to be in, in a single class, maybe right before you graduate, at least, that's how I remember it as. But I think if it's integrated amongst, uh, the curriculum throughout, even the high school level, that there's a, a made awareness of it as far as, you know, getting your first paycheck from, yeah, a, a part-time job, and making feel that you've earned that money and what to do with it and how to manage it. And I think that's, that's really, really, uh, important for self-empowerment when it comes to making, uh, a, a commitment and a, uh, to society. So I think with that, you really want to go beyond just, just making sure that there's one program, it basically be integrated into the curriculum on a, you know, a multi-year basis.
Thank you. Christian?
So my neighbor Maria, when she was going to Emory Secondary School, she had an amazing opportunity to go do an internship at, um, I think it was Novartis, and was going there every day. And it was so nice to see her having to get dressed up and go to work and be there on time. And that opportunity, and she's now in nursing school, and so here we have something that's really building on that lifetime of set of skills, and it was an incredible opportunity. And I'd like to see more of that. Um, you know, right now, life skills is taught throughout the curriculum, but much like civics, it's the other half of that senior class. You know, it's the economics, and I just don't think we have enough of that. It should be done earlier. You know, your second semester- You know, your second semester, senior year, I'm not sure you're getting the best of our students and their attention. And so if they have econ first, or econ second, or civics first, they're only getting half of that curriculum. And so I think we need to really focus on that. And I love the idea of, let's getting our kids into the community, paired up. This is a big, business-rich town. We should be able to get our students internships anywhere across the district, except maybe at the card club.
Thank you. John.
My mother was a high school teacher, and she taught life skills, business kind of class, how to balance your checkbook, how to do a mortgage. I don't feel that we ought to be focusing on that as much as, you know, my mother wouldn't like to hear me say that. I think, I think we ought to be focusing on the deeper learning sorts of skills, how to work on a team, how to communicate orally and writing. I think the kind of internship experiences that my colleagues on the board are talking about can bring that. And I think the kind of art curriculum that Ms. Stillman sort of presented to our board shows that kind of deep, deep learning that, that bring you the kind of practical skills that, that we want our kids to graduate college and career-ready.
Thank you. I believe everybody's answered. And now it is time for your two-minute closing statements. And I believe it's Don who's going to start.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Nancy. And I want to thank everyone for attending this forum. I think we really haven't touched upon one other thing that is really near and dear to my heart. I do it on a daily basis, and it's basically through, I'm going to say, I've been a public school, or public education recipient all my entire life and even in my professional career right now. We haven't talked about the ECCL, which is the Emeryville Center for Community Life, which is going to set precedent as far as our community. It's the most, it's the largest endeavor that this district has partake, and it's going to have ramifications throughout and set precedent in the future for our district. So with my skills and experience level, I know that I can incorporate and make sure that things are done correctly and the right decisions are made.
Thank you. Christian.
So I think we've covered a lot of territory tonight, and we've talked about some of the things that are facing Emeryville schools. You know, Emory has an opportunity now. It's opening a new building. But the building itself isn't going to change anything. You know, we can't have a parade until we fix the potholes. We need to be focused in on getting quality leaders who can provide quality support for our teachers, who interact with our students, who reflect our community, who select the board members, and we repeat this cycle. We really need to get parents involved. We really need to make sure that when we bring leaders on board, they're here, they implement sustainable programs, and they don't disappear when the economy goes bad or they leave. We really need to focus in on what we say we're going to do, ending classist and racist practice. If that's our goal, let's focus in on that, and let's make sure we're doing it by restructuring things like, that we talked about this evening, truancy. You know, again, if we're going to be a full-service wellness center, let's make sure we're doing that well. Let's get our test scores up because that is how we are measured. It's not the only measure, but it is one of them. And if we talk about A to G requirements, let's make sure our students not only have the A to G requirements, but everything else on their application they need to get into a four-year school. Because A to G isn't about getting into a community college. It's about getting into a four-year school and really having those lifelong learning abilities so that you are ready to be, you know, the life skills you were asking about and be civically involved. You know, I am the only person up here who has been a classroom teacher, and I bring that background to the job every day. I know what teachers need in the classroom. I know what support they want from their principals. I'm not worried about architecture. I'm not worried about buildings. I'm really worried about quality-first instruction and students, teachers, and the families. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
Yeah, I hope that folks here and at home will, will support me to be on the school board again and continue my tenure there. I am the only sitting member of the board or only candidate who actually has a child in the schools and who is a parent. And I think that gives, one, a unique perspective to have that much skin in the game. In addition, though, uniquely, I think somewhat for a board member in California, have 23 years working in the field of K to 12 education, working to improve equal educational opportunities as a civil rights attorney. And that is a perspective that I bring to the board. Most of my career, I've been fighting the state or fighting districts, and that, that is a perspective that I continue to have, that I'm on the board because I want to make sure our students have the best equal and adequate educational opportunities that they can. And how, as a board member, can I advance that? I, you know, also have done a tremendous amount of work in California nationally on teacher quality and school funding in particular. Bring that expertise to the board and, you know, and am deeply concerned about improving the instructional quality and training and support for all of our teachers. So I think that and my commitment to improving our public engagement of our students and parents is a good enough reason to support me. Thank you.
Thank you. Miguel.
First of all, Nancy, I want to thank you for this opportunity with League and having us here expressing our views and our opinions. You know, I've been involved with the district 11 years, two years as a volunteer and nine years on the board. When I first came to this district, this district was under siege by the state. It was fiscally insolvent. Students did not have, were not taking the accredited courses to get into UCs and state universities. Teachers were not getting professional development. And students were housed in facilities that needed seismic upgrades. This district has come a long, long, long ways. At this point in time now, we are fiscally solvent. Our students are receiving their curriculum through the ADG requirements. We have partnered, as I said earlier, with Prada Community College on the academic side. Teachers are being, are taking professional development at the Yale Institute in back east, preparing themselves to come back and be more, be more robust in their instructions to students. They are also getting quality training in the Common Core. Students did not have support services at the time when I came on this board. Now we have a wellness program, as I said earlier, who is screening for dino vision, asthma. And, and also, the main thing is the ECCL project. We are now embarking in on a historical event vision that will be looked upon not only locally, regionally, but statewide, where the community can come together as one, where the city will hold, it will, will, will have a better recreation department through their community services, providing services to the community. So I would ask the, this community to continue to support me and my colleagues so that we can continue to take this district from good to great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I want to thank everybody in the audience for their attention and their questions and the candidates for their helpful and informative answers. I think that voters will have a much better idea of your views and your knowledge of the district when they see. And of course, this program will be replayed repeatedly on the public channel in Emeryville and I think also on their YouTube channel and on our League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville YouTube channel. So at any hour of the day or night, people will be able to see and hear what you've had to say this evening and make their decisions. We also would very much like to thank the City of Emeryville and the city clerk and her staff for their help in providing the place and the recording of this forum. For more information on candidates and on ballot measures, please visit smartvoter.org and voterseedge.org. And come and visit us at our League website at L W V B A E dot org. That's our initials, to learn about all the state and local ballot measures and all the other things that we do when it's not election time. Thank you very much for watching. Now remember, your vote does make a difference. So please register before October 20th and vote on November 4th. We're going to be sitting here for two more minutes because they're going to be putting on the messages. So we'll just stay here for a little while, and we'd appreciate your not moving around for a minute or two.[1735.95][1735.95][applause]